And we did a podcast with him the other day.
Great, that's good.
That's phenomenal, young man.
We need that. We need the young people to come forward.
I'm just saying. Are there any? Yeah, are there any questions regarding any items on the agenda? If not, we'll go right to item five one A. This item five one A is discussion summer event schedule. This was a request by trustee Donna Foltcher. So trustee Foltcher?
I think she said she had a comment.
I was asking, were there any public comments regarding the items on the agenda? If not, public comments will be in the rear. That comes in the rear.
That comes at the end of the meeting.
That comes at the end.
That comes at the end of the meeting and this is strictly for if you want to make a comment on the agenda items.
Yes, yes ma'am. Trustee Donna Foltcher?
Good evening. So the, um, there is a couple copies on the table of the schedule. So this is the summer event schedule and activities. So a couple months ago, I had met with the village manager to basically say that we need to have some activities, events to happen during the summertime. Uh, it's been too many years has passed where there hasn't been anything to offer for our youth, for everybody else, for our seniors. So I said that I would come to come and figure out some different activities and events that we could put on here in University Park. So there is several different things. Now, I just wanted to also say that I reached out to, um, I've talked to several other trustees and they gave me their input on some of the things that they would like to have added in as well. So, um, if you start off, the first thing is canceled out, that's going to be, that's not happening with us. But, um, some of the items is for a sip and paint, um, senior craft and exercise, offering to be a wisdom space. We'd like to have that done at the golf course. Um, open gym, I'm working, that's not been confirmed yet, but I'm working with this, both the schools, which is governor's state and also the Crete Monique two oh one U to see if we can get the gym stuff for open gym during the summertime. Um, we offering, uh, it'd be like a family bowling night, children's craft and exercise. We're going to offer bingo, couple ice cream socials, family game night, family skate night, a resident appreciation day where we are appreciating the residents and having a whole big thing where we have food trucks and all the community come out. First responders tour, a tour to the Sabo Museum, try to have a white party at the golf course, casino day trip, off to the college giveaway. That's something that trustee Williams had, um, talked about, um, to Dave and Buster's and a health and wellness fair. So some of the things which is, um, consist of, it's a lot of different dates. As for the schedule, I have not checked with the moles. I have not checked with anything that's written inside the books at the village hall because I don't see that information, but that's why I wanted to make sure that it was presented at the board meetings so the trustees can make their comments. The residents will have their comments on what they like or what they don't want or what they might have ideas on. Um, one of the things that, one of the things that, um, also is with trustee, with trustee Thompson, she's, uh, has wanted to bring in the Illinois Black Museum. That's a date we have for June seventeenth. She could talk more about that. Um, trustee Brooks, me and he worked on the, um, for the tour for the first responders. With the first responders is basically where I had, we had talked to Tom, um, Chief, um, St. Tenga. Um, and that is basically the first responders is where the residents, the children and adults in University Park would be able to tour the police station, the fire station, and then have like a little snacks and something. But that's the opportunity for the residents to, to interact with our first responders and see what they do, where they stay and, and different things like that. So trustee Brooks was helped out with that. Also, I'm working on, me and trustee Thompson is a STEM program to try to bring here to University Park. That's where NYTT, they have their, they're, um, established in Madison, Illinois. And then they're looking to, um, they're looking to bring something here for the summer as well. So we're going to have STEM activities and other things. And then trustee Williams, like I said, she had this idea, she could talk more on it as well, to, um, help support the, the college students, the kids that's going to college with some care packages before they go. So that's another thing as well. And then this is basically all about supporting our community, doing things in our community and all of us, all the different organizations, the sports groups and just the, um, trustees and the board, all doing something together here in University Park. So it's open. If other people have ideas, bring them. This is not like a set, these are not like set dates for sure because there might be things.
One is.
One isn't set day. Uh, a couple are, but all of them are not set dates, but even if.
So the Illinois Black History Museum, they are booked up and seventeen.
Yeah, and that was a, and that was a good, and that was a good day because that's the week of June tenth. So we was like, that'd be a perfect opportunity to bring the museum here to ninety town center where the residents and kids can come and see some of the different artifacts and books and different things like that.
Also, uh, NYTT, um, all the other towns have grabbed up their whole schedule, Country Club, Hills, Hazel Crest, Glenwood, Lansing. So they might be able to give us a day or two and then we can work on, um, we can work on getting a, um, a long running program.
Right.
For the STEM program.
So it's just making sure that we provide some things. We're trying to make sure, I, I am asking for a lot of these things to be free and that the village supports each of these events and activities. If the date is not good, then we could switch the date. So again, these are things that has been presented. Hopefully, it's all, everybody's in agreement with it and these are things that we could definitely present and have for our residents here in University Park. So I don't know, anybody else can?
Yes, I'd like to speak on it. Or did trustee Brooks want to go?
You go trustee.
Okay. Um, as I was explaining to trustee Foltcher on yesterday, I too had met with Amy Nickerson and with Maya Hightower. They too have programs that they want to bring to our community. These are mentorship programs, leadership programs, programs that think outside the box, programs that the average child doesn't get in school. How to open a bank account, how to bill credit, how to fill out a resume, how to get a cover letter started, how to work on a 401K and other things. And they have trips and things planned as well. It's a wonderful program. It's going to give them a leap on life because these are things that they don't get in school. They have mental health, they have healthy dieting, teaching them the right proteins, the right foods to eat. So it's a well thought out program. I met with them in November and I met with them last month with the mayor and with, um, Kim Sanders. And they did a whole presentation on it. Um, so I also want to make sure that gets included. And just like she said, I do want to do a college giveaway because many times we do give away things to the younger children, the middle school, the high school, but the college kids don't get a foot on life. Why not get a laundry basket for each one of them, put towels, sheets, shampoo, all their personal items, things that they need, shower shoes, a shower cap, ramen noodles, microwave popcorn, all the things we needed when we went. I do want to make that happen, maybe even give them a gift certificate as well. And myself and Sonia, uh, trustee Jenkins had talked about the appreciation night. That was something that we too had discussed for the residents. And over here, trustee Lewis and I had talked about the senior programs. I have spoke to a wonderful lady that you all know, Natalia Hill, who is over the senior program in Richmond Park. And she works with Calvin Jordan and she has nothing but resources, ideas, everything we need to get senior exercises, dance programs, wonderful trips, not just going to a casino to spend all their money and come back broke. I'm sorry, but it's the truth anyhow. I want to make sure that they go to the theaters and nice restaurants and that they can enjoy life and see things that, uh, to Galena, other places. So I also want to work on these things. I've talked to the village manager extensively and I want to see these programs as well go forth. I'm not knocking anyone. I think we should all collaborate, come together and let's make it happen for University Park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, I just wanted, um, thank trustee, uh, Donna Foltcher for putting this together. Uh, this was a vision that I would have to say that, um, sitting up here three terms, um, we all try to put effort, but this is an example of we finally are, the, the village is moving in the right direction. For her to come and put this together, I want the people to see that what this really does is that this bridges the community. It established the memories that we did have a long time ago of how it was. And what she has done with this is establish new memories for us to begin. So, um, I just wanted to compliment her on that. Um, I'm excited because it was one of the first things that attracted me to wanting to become a police officer, uh, at sixteen here was a trip over to the police station. Now, it wasn't because I was on tour. It was because I needed to talk to a police officer. I think we at the point that the kids today need to see our first responders. And actually, I'm kind of smiling because it was Ms. Strauss' son, who was a police explorer that kind of got that, he was a lieutenant back then, um, that kind of made that influence for me. And I think that we need that, that, that door to open. And what Donna Foltcher has done is opened a door for many things. It's not just for a select group of people. She made it for the whole community. Um, also, what I like was that, um, she is reaching out to not just trustee Williams and others. You know, she's also reaching out to other organizations. So I would just like to say that if you are an organization and she's reaching out, she's doing it in good faith, what she's trying to do and trying to, um, in any way, form or fashion, bring the village, University Park into play and making it that, okay. Can y'all hear me? There we go. Yeah. Okay, probably time to shut up, but it's just a point that I want to say that if she is reaching out, it doesn't hurt when the village is trying to extend that, that, that hand because let's not forget what we were at one point and where we went. And now we're trying to go again. It is twenty twenty-five. Nineteen eighty-seven was a long time ago, you know? So trustee Foltcher, thank you so much and especially in the role that I can't wait for the first responders tour. So we gonna have fun, chief. So I yield my time.
I'd like to mention one more thing too. Also, um, Maya High, Maya Hightower and Amy Nickerson both lived in this community, graduated from Crete Monique High School. Maya, for the last two years, gave out twenty scholarships each year to the tune of twenty-one hundred dollars. She did that for two years in a row. Mr. Nickerson also has given out many scholarships as well. And although this isn't part of the agenda, um, Mr. Robinson from the Veterans Committee just wanted to make known, he's got events coming up for the, uh, for the, for the adults as well. Okay, uh, but I did want to mention, he had some, um, things coming out for the adults, but I did want to make sure that Mr. Amy Nickerson, who's well known in the community as well as Maya Hightower, has done tremendous things for the, the high school students and they continue to do it. So I want to make sure that we understand that and we do implement these programs as well. Thank you.
Um, when is the first meeting with the moles committee too? Um, when is the collaboration with all of us?
Well, I do have that information in there. So each, each, um, each event is a location and it's, it's in a, it's in a packet. So each event is a loca, that's okay, is each event is a location. And like I said, that's why I wanted to bring it to, I asked the mayor to add it to the agenda so it could be presented to the board and to everybody else. And so those that have like the moles, and this, this goes across. This is for organizations, this is for sports things. If you all have events going on that day, I don't want to do overlap. So I don't want to do the overlap. So that's why if you see something on here that is, you all have something going on as well at that particular time, because some of these things is like two hours long. So it's not an all day thing. So, and then for even like the sip and paints, it's broken down where it's for just the younger kids for one. Then it's one for the older kids because they don't like to hang with the younger kids. And then it's one for the adults. So it's, it's different, it's a breakdown of all of that to show, yes, some of these things do need transportation and that's where it would be working with the, the village to get this stuff going, um, to fund them. So it's a couple that need, that need transportation. Some of these things like skate night and stuff, everybody's going to go on their own. So the kids would be dropped off, whoever be dropped, be going with their family. So we wouldn't be actually needing transportation for that. But I think when I broke it down, the only thing that we would need transportation for is for the Du Sable Museum trip and then the casino trip. And that's, the casino trip is something that manager Scott had said she wanted. So she was working on that. So I just added it in because that's something that she said that a lot of the seniors have reached out to her and that she's going to work on doing that. So that's, that's on her to do, but the only other thing that need transportation is a trip to do the Sable Museum. And I, and I chose to do Sable Museum because that's one museum that a lot of our kids do just, just don't go to. I mean, I, I've gone to the Museum of Science and Industry, I've been to all of them, Shedd Aquarium with the schools. I just left one last week to go to the Field Museum. So I done been to those so many times, but when I bring up the Du Sable Museum over there on, um, half park area, over fifty-fifth area, I don't know what that is, but none of them have gone. So I wanted to at least make sure that that was one that we could offer. And then also with that, with the lunches and stuff, um, we have sponsors that can, you know, provide the lunches for the kids. So it's just one that actually need transportation. And I think based off of, and a lot of this stuff, all of this stuff, a lot of it needs to be registered. So you got to register for a lot of this stuff because we don't know, right? So we're preparing, we're hoping that everybody gets on. What is actually truly needed is some advertising, we need some flyers to be put out there. We need for this information to get out to the residents as soon as possible. So if we could have some type of mailer to go out with all of this stuff along with the moles, along with whatever, bring it all together, send it out so the residents of University Park would know exactly what's going on here for the months of June, July and August.
And also, how many volunteers per event do you need?
That, that's the other thing is that, that's why to me it's important that we get these committees going. Um, like you said, the moles, trustees, we got residents. So once this is all good and confirmed and we're saying we're moving forward with it, then we can start continuously working on, let's get some volunteers. Because some stuff, it don't need as many volunteers. But hopefully us residents out there, those that's interested, it's been plenty of residents that's been interested to be a part of some of these committees, uh, like the, Ms. Taylor with the educational board, you know, it's like different things that they are out there looking to want to help. And I, I know they do. So I, I don't think we'll have much of a problem with getting some volunteers. It may, it might, for someone, we might need a lot more, but I'm also working, I reached out to the churches. They said that they was going to help and be a part of it. I'm going to also reach out to, um, these community organizations here, Black Club, CCC, all of them, they can help. Reach out to some of the others as well in the school district. So I am reaching out to some of them already to help support each of these events.
Any response yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I've got plenty of responses. I just wanted to make sure, I told them, nothing is confirmed until we talk about it at the board. So that's why I said, let's bring it here and let's talk. And then those that said that they are willing to help in some of these things, then I can go back to them and say, okay, let's move forward with this, let's move forward with that. Even with some of like the ice cream socials, I reached out and found a different, a lot of different vendors. But the one I really want, I, I reached out to the Franklin's, they have theirs. So I definitely want to bring them in to have theirs. So they already sent over their information. So I'm trying to make sure that we utilize the residents here in University Park first. If they have businesses or different activities, those are the ones that I'm reaching out first. And then we can fill in with the rest of the stuff.
Okay. Mayor, you have my time?
Yeah.
The Illinois Black History Museum is really an easy one because it's mobile. So she, whatever exhibit you, she has multiple exhibits. So whatever exhibit you want to have, she will bring it to us and we can have it right in this room here.
I just wanted to take the time to thank trustee Fultcher for doing all of this to make sure that our children do have something to do in the summer. I have some concerns. We need volunteerism, we need, you know, budget. You know, our village manager is not here, so you know, she can be a little wonderful and with the money, you know. So I'm looking at that and I'm looking at background checks for the volunteers. Are we to pay for those? Are they required to have those before they come and volunteer? I'm looking at, you know, what, where the gym, what gym are we gonna use? What insurance, is the insurance gonna be used from the village or do we have to get other insurance? These are things that's just gonna dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure that everything goes as smoothly as possible. But I am extremely excited about this for the children because they need something to do instead of aimlessly run, um, run around. So just as long as we are, are dotting our i's and crossing our t's, I think that we also need to have, uh, we need to be inclusionary when it comes down to the community and make sure that the residents are included with some of the ideas as well and hear some input from them. Thank you.
I just wanna, sorry, can I? And, and that's why I wanted to bring it here so that the council meeting, the residents can get their input. Like I say, if y'all have any ideas, feel free because this calendar is not full. Like I say, one day it could be for two hours. If y'all have other things that y'all want to present, let the board know. You can let me know. I don't have a problem with that. For the budget, that's why I put into the packet the estimated projected budget for each one of the different events. So you can have an idea of what the cost is. I've reached out to our contractors and, um, some of our stakeholders to say, are y'all interested in sponsoring some of these events? And they said yes. So I even have people that's looking to help support those. So yes, I definitely understand for the budget, that's why I reached out to some of the stakeholders, our contractors. They're willing to help support the events. And also for the residents, feel free. That's why I wanted to make it open and be transparent so you all can be able to introduce what you feel. If you don't like some of these ideas, hopefully you do. But you can always let somebody know, let me know. My information is on the website, I can give it to you. I don't know it all by heart. But you could always reach out to me and say, hey, let's, how about this, what about this? If we can do it and work it out, I'm all for it. So I'm all for any activities, listen, any activities or events during this summer in University Park because it's gonna be for everybody. So it's all inclusive of whatever.
Um, you know, we have the summer job program. And when I was growing in Chicago, I worked in the park district as a counselor. And so if we are doing these programs, we're taking them to the Shed Aquarium and the zoo and different things like that, we can reach out to our youth to be counselors, you know, and build a relationship with them having that as well. Because I had fun bossing children around when I was young. It was fun for me.
But I, I just feel like the budget is, I gave some projected costs. And to me, it's regardless of what the budget is, we should be offering some stuff to the residents and to the community. So I, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to prolong it. But as for budget wise, I mean, I've gave y'all some projections because I actually looked up a lot of this stuff, looked at the costs, what the cost would be. And the numbers are very minimal to, to support a summer program. So it's not like it's big numbers. I don't think we need to have like, okay, here's the budget. This is what it is. We should be offering these things. And even for instance, the, the white party, it's not even nothing to do there. You just have somebody there at the golf course and then have the people come. And then they're gonna spend their money on the food or whatever, or whatever we decide to do. Because it's all, it's all a joint conversation. So as in saying, do I have this all planned out? No, I want to make sure that the residents, the trustees give their input on what they want to suggest as well. But to me, as for a budget, I think it's regardless of what the amount is, not really say regardless, but like I said, I gave some projections by reaching out to a lot of the different people already and the numbers are very small.
I think what she was saying is that oftentimes, we seem to be very money-conscious in this room. We barely want to increase her from five thousand to twenty-five. And we know that Ms. Scott can be tight, to say the least. So I think that's all she was just trying to say. We, we want to go forward. We just want to make sure everything is in place. Because the program that they're offering, I don't believe it's a cost involved in it. These are lessons that they want to teach the children and promote them on to a better lifestyle. Every, college isn't for everyone. So they're teaching them entrepreneurship, how to build their business, how to brand, things along that line. So we need to collaborate, meet with Ms. Scott, and see how we can get these things off and running.
Right. And I, and I did, that was the original meeting with, with her. And she was like, there should be no problem with the funding. She could reach out to Industrial Park. That was like my first meeting was with her to say, this is what I want. I spoke about a lot of these things already with her. And she said that there, it shouldn't be no problem because she could reach out to the Industrial Park as well. So as for funding, that's why I continued to move forward with it because she didn't see that there would be any problem. And like even for the DeSaba Museum, that was actually her suggestion to go to the DeSaba Museum. So like I said, it was a whole combination of everybody giving their input. But as for the funding part of it, I did reach out to manager Scott originally and that's, talked about the funding, how it's gonna be. And she said that she didn't see that that would be a problem. I know she's not here to respond to that, but that was the conversation.
Okay. June eighth is approaching. So what, if we move forward, we need to have at least a, uh, come to Jesus moment with all the residents. So we all can, like a, a workshop so we all know who's volunteering, what we doing. Because May is, we already at May thirteenth, fourteenth, thirteenth, whatever, thirteenth. So we need to have a meeting with residents and volunteers, you know, brainstorming how this is gonna play out throughout the whole, you know, the, the summer and the year.
Because the, the first event on the cali- like I said, I haven't checked with other ones, but the first event on the calendar for June is June eighth. No, it's not June eighth, it's, um, June ninth, which is a Sip and Paint. At the town center. So it's, uh, between eleven and one. No, that, I told you, that one was canceled out. That's, that's not with us. June eighth is not with us. Our first event is going to be June ninth. What's the second Saturday? That's, that's June eighth. We're not doing any event June eighth. I canceled that. We canceled that. That's, that's canceled. So that event is, um, the second Saturday you said, right, of June? That's the fourteenth. That's the fourteenth. That's the fourteenth and nothing is going there. We were, I was, okay, so I was stating that they asked, what was the first event? Someone said June eighth. Even though June eighth is on there, that is not gonna be our event anymore. I'm not presenting that event. So June eighth is canceled, being presented by this village. The first event that I'm talking about would be June ninth. If you look at the calendar, which is the Sip and Paint, which is for the ages of five to twelve, at the town center between eleven and one. Like I said, what I'm gonna do, I'm going to check and make sure that the town center is open on all of these different days to confirm it. And then any changes you all would see will be put out there once you all see the flyers. These are just something that you all can be aware of, that this is the stuff that we're trying to have. Any changes, you will see it with the flyers or the advertisement of the actual dates and locations.
Mayor, may I be recognized? I think. I'm thinking, I'm thinking in terms of marketing. We need to make sure that we send something out to the homes now so they can know that this, um, this impending events are getting ready to take place. So we need to say on that marquee, on those big boards, we need something to let them know that we are doing something for our children. Because we want to make sure, my concern is we can be a little apathetic in our community and not participate. And we want to make sure that there's a lot of participation in this. There's a lot of effort that has been put into it and we want to make sure that there is participation. So tomorrow is when we need to be sending these things out because it's gonna take time to get to the homes. It's gonna take time to make sure that, you know, the residents do know about this. Because they don't attend because they don't know. And so we have to get our communication up and running. And I don't really know if the, if the school systems are really, are, from my understanding, they don't like to allow us to send things home with the children like past practices. Why, I don't know. But we're coming to the end of the school year and we need to make sure that all of the children are informed and their parents are informed. And if we have to, you know, get any kind of little literature, we can, you know, each one, I'm very excited about this, but we need to put marketing, we have to do that. It's very important that it's done and done as quickly as possible.
I agree. That's why I like, that's why I wanted to get on the agenda. So if we're moving forward with it, not to say it was voted on already. Usually things like this don't always get voted, but I wanted it to be voted on. But as of tomorrow, if we're moving forward with it, I'm gonna go check and make sure that the town center is available. All these different things that's here, so it's not no type of clash or overlap reserve, so.
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, um, at least for the new trustees, I got the email that our newsletter, Niva just checked, she's, I think she wanted us to approve the writing, uh, for the three new trustees. So maybe that's the moment we want to put it out with this newsletter that's coming out so that we wouldn't have to spend extra money.
I agree.
Yeah, extra money, just extra, can she put a pause on it and let it, because I don't know if this is the summer edition or however it works. But, but if we can, um, those dates that we know that we have solid, that we can have something that we, you know, that trustee Fultcher and, you know, we have people that are willing to work and it's actually booked. You know, we put it in that, that newsletter as a calendar so the people can see. And if I'm not mistaken, I want to say I seen the library board or another district send something to the house. And it's like flyers and it has events in the calendar inside. I can't remember or if, I don't even know if we did it. It's the library board?
It's a lot of library board, Creek Park District, Moni Town.
Newsletter. So maybe if we can just put that little extra.
That's good.
Yes.
I didn't know she's, she didn't, I didn't get that email. Maybe she just sent it to all the new trustees.
Yeah, it's, it, uh, I only seen, um,
That'd be good.
Sonia, Karen, and myself.
Okay.
So that's, that's the only reason why I knew.
We also can advertise on social media. And that can be quick and, um, free.
Yes. I say yes. Yeah, yep. Yep, before that, before the board meeting, all of that stuff would be worked out if I can get there. Did you have questions for the residents? Yeah, after each agenda item.
Mayor, I know she's, the village manager is not here, but I want to make sure when I read it, 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 it's more for that storm drain, it's not for any other drain, correct? I wanted, right, I wanted to make sure that that's what it was for. Okay.
Obligation under Rebuild Illinois to appropriate the balance of those funding by July first. Otherwise, you have to repay the money back. Of the various projects, this project, the village's match portion from, because you guys have $469,000 and change of Rebuild Illinois funds. The rest of the project will be funded with village funds. But this is one of those projects where you guys can complete it. Half of it can be, or the majority can be paid from Rebuild Illinois and then the rest, the village will cover the rest of it.
Okay, okay. I yield my time.
Yes.
Good evening, residents, trustees, and mayor. We're looking to update the fire codes to the international fire codes because currently, uh, the code says BOKA and BOKA hasn't been around since 1994. So this is just simply an update to be more current with our fire prevention codes, especially with buildings going in and, uh, our current inspections.
I have a question. So chief, um, are the upgrades just this, um, one yellow highlighted section that says BOKA, Basic Fire Prevention Code? What parts are the new parts? The red and the red? Or this one too?
So that's part of the update in red. And then the IFC 2021 addition is the addition that we would be moving to. Yes, that's a.
Is this on? Is it on? All right, good. Well.
Is it on? Alright, good. Well, this is, of course, one of the good news things that we do in University Park. And we've been doing it for thirty-six years now, and I have been chairperson of the Economic Scholarship Fund for University Park for all of those years. And we started out in nineteen eighty-nine and gave three five-hundred-dollar scholarships. Now, uh, this year, I am giving out eighteen one-thousand-dollar scholarships.
Excellent.
Nine are new, two, uh, seven will be, I'm giving out Thursday night at six P.M. at the Crete-Money Awards Ceremony. And then two are Marion students that I have, uh, sent letters to. And nine are renewals, which means that anybody that receives a University Park Scholarship Fund has the option of renewing every year for the next four or five years that they are in college. So, uh, it's, it's a great program, and it's a lot of work, but, uh, it's one of the things that I enjoy doing, so I'm glad to do it. Now, were you all given a list in your packet? Good, good. I was hoping so. But, uh, I just thought that I would like to make note of, um, our scholarship, new scholarship winners. Our, uh, Perpetual Asma, Martice Crawford, Cheyenne Dismuke, Kalai, Kalaya Gross.
Alia.
Okay, thank you. Tamia Hall, uh, Annie King, Yacan Lloyd, Samir Walden, Kalik Wood. And then scholarship renewals is Ariana Dismuke, Kimora Broderick, Kaitlin Hickenbaum, Batum, Joseph Lewis, Michaela McNutt, uh, Mia Peacock, Krista Williams, Taylor Midlock, and Tanya Mutlev. Um, our sponsors aren't. I mean, I've, um, we, I collected, uh, twelve thousand four hundred dollars this year. I'm giving out eighteen thousand. I do still have a healthy, um, uh, balance on our savings account because over the years, sometimes we gave out less than money's received. And, uh, and it hasn't happened lately. We seem to be giving out more than that. But I figure as long as we've got a healthy savings account, we'll just keep spending it. And, and I give everybody that applies usually a, a scholarship and those that renew. So, but it's a good program. But note our sponsors. Uh, Moni Township is a sponsor for one. Uh, Home With Disposal, Peak Case Pantry. Dot Foods gave us three thousand. That's three scholarships. Um, the, uh, a former, uh, University Park trustee, Polly Burned, uh, is now Polly Byrne Patterson. She gives a thousand-dollar, uh, memorial scholarship for her late husband, Daniel Burned. Um, Faith Movers Church gave a thousand. Arvin Steel, a thousand. Dot Foods gave, as I said, three thousand, and they're scattered for various. Budrick Trucks gave, um, the John Casper Company, uh, is a, uh, I believe they're one of our accounting firms. And, uh, they gave a thousand, which is great. The Antero Group, um, did that. And we had smaller donations, uh, from some of our vendors, which was like, the Home With Disposal was five hundred. Uh, Caluvette G Heating was two hundred and fifty. Calumet City Plumbing is fifty dollars. We had Jackie Haas, our state rep, gave two hundred and fifty. Um, we have, um, our lawyers, uh, Montana and Welch gave two hundred and fifty. Only thing I'm really disappointed about is I'm sure we have a much larger law firm that gets most of our dollars. I didn't get one penny from them. So, I'm encouraging the law firms, again, this year. I, I just wanna make sure that you understand that it's very important because I have to go into savings, and it'd be nice if we could have everything funded. So, our past lawyers in the past that helped start this and set this scholarship up. And this scholarship is set up as a non-binding loan, which means that students do not have to report it to their, uh, schools. And they don't have to have a count against them when they have other scholarships that they count against. And that really is, is helpful. So, uh, I just wanna let you know that. But, uh, I just, uh, wanna let you know that we've had another successful year, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am the chairperson of the commu-, uh, Community Block Club in University Park. And we are the people who do a few things around the village. And one of the, um, things that we have taken on, or items we have taken on, is bringing back Children's Day. For the northern people, you may not know about Children's Day. But for those of us who are in the south, or from the southern part of this country, know about Children's Day. So, that's what we are doing. We are re, it was, for some reason, was canceled, and I can't find out why. Ooh, your hands itching? When your hand itched, Mayor, it means you got plenty of money to give out. But for Children's Day, Mother's Day, the second Sunday in May. Children's Day has been deemed to be the second Sunday in June. And Father's Day has always been deemed to be the third Sunday in June. But we are bringing back the second Sunday in June as Children's Day. And it's always on a Sunday. And it was on Sunday for a reason. Now, if you don't know about this, Google it. And the Community Block Club is starting it here in University Park again. And we are working through the churches and the community. And I've had good response so far. Now, I know, we, uh, this is, it's going to be, um, a trying time getting this started. But I always have an excuse for everything you do or don't do. So, so deemed, we're deeming that June second is Children's Day. A second month, June, it's the second, I'm, then you don't, uh, want that day. The second Sunday. It's the second Sunday all over the United States. That is true. Now, we will be celebrating it. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, I was trying to get your attention, 'cause when I signed the sheet, I wanted to comment on the agenda items first before today, now. But thank you for this moment, everybody. I just wanna say, welcome to start this, tonight's meeting, as it has been started. Thank you, trustee Delworth, for researching. Thank you, all the other trustees, for collaborating with the ideas that you collaborated on. It's something that was well-needed, much-needed. Uh, I like the fact that it addresses all ages. I don't mind volunteering. I'm not working with no children under six. But I don't mind volunteering. I've done three to six, six to fourteen, fourteen to twenty-one. No more under six. So, any other ages, I'm more than willing to volunteer. So I commend the new board for working together to make this happen. This is an energetic idea. We gonna make it happen, right? Cool beans. Uh, kudos again to the Education Advisory Committee. Um, I go back to those days when it was only a five-hundred-dollar award per person. Um, it's nice to hear that it's available. I just don't understand why children in this community, better yet, parents in this community, don't go out for these. I've passed information to my church. Uh, I've handed the applications out to people, to the parents. Because that pocket is the concern of the parents, okay? As much as I don't like ramen noodles, I mean, you know, thirty-three percent sodium, come on now. Uh, my next item, is everybody aware of the CPR class that's available? Not to steal your thunder, Chief, but have you had a lot of sign-ups other than me? So everybody else is CPR certified? It's this Wednesday next week, from five-thirty to nine-thirty.
It was posted on, on Nextdoor and Facebook.
And again, I don't understand why it's not taken advantage of. The CPR classes that's coming up Wednesday, next week.
The last one they had, they, it was too crowded when Richards was here. So people were taking advantage of it.
The one coming up for the twenty-first is my concern right now. Did you say or did not say that? Well, I know one person that signed up. Thank you. Come on, everybody. That, uh, CPR class is a benefit for any household. Anybody who's had any kind of medical issue, and especially starting at fourteen years old, that's a plus. You know, people keep, residents keep talking about the village doesn't this, doesn't this, doesn't this. Start taking advantage of what the village is offering. It doesn't matter what organization. It doesn't matter what department. Just start taking advantage. And Mayor, can I remind you, uh, I'm still having an issue not hearing the board meetings. And I know the acoustics here is the same acoustics that's been here all these years. I don't understand why I can't hear the board meeting. Pardon me? Yeah. And with new equipment, excuse me, with the new equipment that cable got, I thought it would be a betterment, just like experiencing tonight with the, uh, speak, uh, with the speaker, the mics. I don't know. And last but not least, my family would like to extend condolences to the Jones families. Um, we go back before Park Four South days. So, heartfelt condolences, okay? Everyone have a great evening. Enjoy. Be safe. Thank you.
Hello. Um, two things, uh, I wanted to address what you guys were talking about as far as the school, um, the school district. If the mayor or liaison, somebody, one of you can just make an appointment, basically with, uh, Congress Lees and set that up, and you can, the village has access to all of the same things. It's called Peach Jar. So can y'all write that down, please? And basically, you just use that, and you guys gotta, being the village, you can use that for free. That's how you get all of the, whatever you want to the school district. You gotta set that up through the district. I, I'll show you guys what you gotta do, but you just, yeah. Um, and it is free for the village. Two, can we look into, I know trustee Jenkins, I know you mentioned this before, but what they have, that robo-call. Can somebody please research, can we get that for the village? Uh, I know I mentioned this before at a board meeting, but can't, I think it's like two thousand dollars or something. It's not that expensive, but that's the way we can reach all the residents. It's easy. Somebody gets on there weekly and say, this is the events, this is what's happening this week. Same thing that the high school principal does. It's a, it's a little system. It's a robo-call. That's all we need for the village. And ju, but you just gotta pay for it, but it's not expensive. And that's what we need to solve the problem. Okay, alright, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I really don't need that mic. 'Cause I'm kinda loud. I have a lot of things to address. First of all, my name is Patricia Callaway. I'm the acting tenant president at Thornwood House. Now, bear with me, okay? Uh, I heard, uh, trustee Jenkins-Bell say something about the summer program. Sounds great. I worked for, I worked for the summer program since I was thirteen years old, all the way up through high school. So I know how it works. Where you sign up at? When do you tell the children when and where to sign up? Now, and on your jobs, I'm sure all of us have had jobs. You have workshops on your job. You have meeting on your job. So, I'm sorry, uh, trustee Williams, your, your idea about the checking accounts and how to live in 401K is a great idea. When I went to school, we had bookkeeping. They don't have it now. So, if you, my, I'm just saying, combine them. Combine them. Have a once a week or once every two weeks mandatory workshop for the children and the people that are working for the summer programs. I think that would be great. And your ideas for all of the activity sounds great. But my suggestion to you as a citizen and resident of the village of University Park, on that calendar, please put how much it costs. Because a lot of us have children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren that want to participate. And at the last minute, it's time to go to the museum. Oh, you gotta pay fifteen dollars to get on the bus. That's not feasible for a lot of people with more than one child. Give us a break. Give us some time to get the money so they can go. Make it a lot of things more educational with fun. Now, sir, your CPR class, that sounds really, really good. But when the fire department was invited to Thornwood House and we asked about the CPR class, they said it was seventy-five dollars per person. That's a lot of money. That is one of the reasons why you don't get people to participate. It costs too much money. We don't have that. We barely making a paycheck to paycheck. Put that in your agenda for the village to help fund with the cost and take it down to twenty-five dollars. Or get a group and talk to the Red Cross and you, you guys to do it a little bit cheaper. My children, my grandchildren are begging for CPR class because they need a CPR class to legally babysit. Now, now, let's keep it real. I have, you don't wanna know how many, but I have forty-three grandchildren, and I have twenty-one great-grandchildren. That's a lot of seventy-five dollars.
So the CPR class that is May twenty-first is one hundred percent free. I worked with the village, uh, May twenty-first.
See, nobody, nobody at Thornwood House knows this. Nobody knows that. Thornwood House, y'all know about it? Ma'am, you know about it? You understand what I'm saying? Give, come over there and give us a sheet. Talk to Paul, to, to our social worker. Let us know about these things out of free. They're over there thinking the C- They're over there thinking the CPR class is seventy-five dollars. Okay, one other thing, I need to, excuse me?
So we can have a maximum of nine people. There was a flyer that was put up at Thornwood House, I don't know what happened to it. Uh, somebody might have taken it down, I don't know. But it was posted up there, but, uh, we have a maximum of nine people.
I'll put it up again, I'll put it up.
I can stop by tomorrow and I can get you some.
Ask for, uh, go to the social worker, Paul, not the office, Paul. When you come in, he's to the right. When you come in the door, he's to the right.
Okay.
Okay, Paul will make sure he gets the right, cause he'll run off and put on every door. They wasn't okay, they signed up now for your class.
You would have to call the village hall, because they do take down some of your information.
Okay. I do have two things that really wasn't on the agenda that really needs to be addressed, that I don't think that these trustees in this committee is aware of. The water. The water at Thornwood House is, is breaking people out. It's giving them rashes, it's making them itch. Please help us. We've been to doctors, and you gotta pay extra to go to a dermatologist. This does not make sense. And I, the reason I know it's the water, oh Jesus, I can't think of the name of it. But it begins with an H. I recently lost my sister. And I just got back, Monday I think it was, Tuesday, one of them days. My mind is not really straight on when I got back. When I was in Georgia for three weeks, my skin cleared up. I came back to Thornwood House, I took a shower for one week, and my body looks like scales. We're breaking out a little patches red, looks like, it looks like eczema. Please help us with this water. If it's not good for your skin, you know it's not good to drink. Now, I don't care who come out and tested, something's not right. And it's not just one person, two people, it's not just the two or three people that's here with me tonight. It's a lot of people in that building that is breaking out. It's got to be the water. I have a petition here. I would've had more names, but like I said, I lost my good sister. But thanks to some of the people, we got a hundred and seven signatures. First of all, I wanted to tell y'all, I really appreciate the work that you did do on the road going into Thornwood House. The patching helped, but we need it fixed. That big hole, y'all, I can't buy another muffler. And I bought two, because of them holes. There's one on the side, that if you miss this big hole, you gonna hit that one. If you ride on the wrong side of the street, you gonna hit this one over here. Please, please, find some kinda way to fix it and not patch it. You want the signatures, here they are. If you need more information, let me know, I'll start all over again. Who gets this? The signatures are for to get the roll effect. We have, we have medical people coming down there, your ambulances, the fire department, health workers, buses, transportation, and we, we had a couple, before you fixed it, we had a couple of, uh, Uber and Lyft people wouldn't come. Thank you.
Can I just say something to Ms. Callaway real quick?
Can I talk to Ms. Callaway?
I will, I will personally contact the EPA tomorrow and give them that information, and anyone else that I can talk to regarding your water situation. I know y'all aren't under the watch, but something needs to be done, I'm a advocate for it, and I will put my pedal to the metal. You are welcome, yes.
Oh, Ms., oh, wait, I'm still, Ms. Callaway, thank you for coming out for Thornwood, great representation. Thank you guys for coming out, this is where it starts. And now that our board is very aware of what's going on, I'm quite sure that we'll work together to come up with some of your solutions. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Mary Judge wanted me to mention about Olmsted as well, Craig, well, we know Sandra Drive is a lot of that throughout the whole village. Um, I wanna congratulate Donna for what she does. Congratulations to Donna for what she's done for many, many years. Um, can you hear me now? Okay. So Donna, I thank you for what you've been doing for so many years. My mentee is one of those recipients that got the award. She'll be going away to college, she's number four on the graduation list. And she's going to medical school, so I'm really happy for things that she's done. My condolences to you, Craig D. Jones. My heart goes out for you and your sister, I know the closeness, and I know how that impact your life, and I know the sadness of that, so my condolences and prayers, you need anything, reach out to me. Also, I wish we could get our committees back, because I have a problem, just received my taxes. Woo, okay, forty-three cents from the library only, thank God for them. But I think you put people in office, and they do not, and I've been saying it for years, I tell, used to say that here on this board. People go to the school board meetings, go to the school board meetings, majority of your taxes are going for that school. Seven thousand dollars over there, and nobody goes there and make them accountable. Do Google, I did a survey, look at their salaries, it's ridiculous, and nobody comes here, Mr. Hall. You got in office, and what are you doing? You never come here and say, we're doing this and doing, no accountability. I have a problem with accountability and all these speeches people give about trans, transport, oh transparency, no, it's not happening. So we need to really pump on them, because that's quite a bit. Um, I wish, like again, those committees, cause we used to have an education committee, those things helped a lot in the village, and they got people involved when we had committees, I wish the committees could come back, new board, it would be great. Also, as far as our children, chief, I had to call the sheriff, chief. I'm not paying these high taxes, and which we're gonna, if we get this park, this, God only help us, because I don't need another tax, we'll be taxed at our homes. These people cannot afford it, and I'm tired of paying taxes. Forty kids ran from Craig Park. I got on the phone, gave my name, address, and everything, and ready to go out there. And you wonder why people are low, packing and loading, because forty kids ran from that park. A lady next door to me had her child out there, kid almost got trampled. And they came across my yard, and thank God, all of our residents over there have fenced, they couldn't get through. They were carrying weapons, screaming, cussing, a first warm day, this is what we're gonna, this is what I got to look at? I can't walk out of my door, and I got kids traveling across my yard, that's ridiculous. And it's unnecessary, and I'm not going to accept it, something's going to happen, and I have a pen and it's mighty. I'm not going to continue to, I can't live in fear like that. We can't walk out of our door, kids coming out like that, really? So the chief was nice, he was there, I gave all the information I possibly could. It was horrible, it must've been seventy kids total. Cause while, I got, I took a picture of something that got on Blackhawk. I got, and my camera goes from one end to the other. And around my house, on the side of my house, I'm very secured. So any information, I have it on video, I can capture it and give it to you like I did before. Last thing, I'd like to congratulate all the people that just got in, the trustees that were in. Trustee Karen Lewis, Donna, and my precious son, Nero, I call him that, Theo Brooks. And I thank you, bro, Theo Brooks, because of, especially from my heart of your compassion, your love. And you're, he, this man is so genuine and so compassionate. Built the house for cats. You know, anytime a man that loves people so much, he don't even wanna see a cat deserted. And he feeds them. And if he has that much compassion, the compassion he has for our children, our family, his family, me, my family. And I thank you for all the love that you give, trustee Brooks, and the sincerity that you do. And I want you, I'm so glad you made it back in, because you do, you love us, and we love you so much. And again, congratulations to all, thank you very much.
Trustee Brooks, we gonna send them licenses over there to you.
Thank, I'm, th- thank you. And our last but not least public comment will come from Bobby Greer.
Good afternoon to the board. And our new.
Little quiet, please.
Congratulations to our new board. You guys look good up there, you sound great. And first, I would like to give my condolences to Dee Jones on the death of her sister. Listening to, I came in a little late, but listening to all of the conversations about the, uh, all of the ideas for activities for the village, for the, the children for the summer. Also though, for the rest of the residents and the seniors. I was really glad to hear that, because we really don't have anything here for the seniors. Anything that I go to, I have to go to Richton Park or Park Forest. They are swamped with activities for, designated for the seniors, and they are really great activities. So hopefully, uh, this board will be bringing some of those activities here, okay? To the fire chief, I would love to sign up for that CPR class. I did not know about it, can you tell the date and the times, please?
It's May twenty-first, from five thirty to nine PM, here at Ninety Town Center.
Okay, I will be there. And, um, great idea about the DuSable Museum. Once upon a time, not many people know about it, but I do know that our former mayor, Vivian Covington, knew about it. There was a, a South Suburban Museum called SMA that was headed with by David Johnson, Kevin Perkins, and a whole lot of other people were on this committee. And so was I. We were like sister to the DuSable Museum that Margaret Burles, who, who was the co-founder of that, sort of like adopted us. We gave monies back to the DuSable Museum because we, we disbanded. So hopefully, um, we can maybe get some of that to, maybe get a bus or something to go to the, uh, to the DuSable Museum. I will reach out to some of the people that were cheering that, to see how we can, and if we can, and I will try, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Greer. Again, last but not least, Sarah Boyd, please.
Good evening, everyone. Condolences to Ms. Dee Jones for the loss of your sister, and Ms. Patricia Callaway. Co-condolences to you. And congratulations to all the members that are joining the board here again. And, uh, it was really nice to see you all working together. And hope you all can combine your programs from Ms. Gina Williams with Ms. Donna over here, and work together and keep this collaboration going, because it's good, and it felt good to hear that today. But I just wanted to kinda follow up on, to know, it's been mentioned about the water. And I kinda want to know where we standing with it, what direction are we moving with that? Since we've had people to help people fill out their forms to have the water tested and everything. This is an ongoing problem. I would like to hear from the board, what's been done in an ongoing manner, so that we can just kinda keep up with things, with what's going on with the community, whether we've got a resolution or not, but we have to move in that direction. If every meeting, it should be something said about what you're doing with the water, who you spoke with, to keep the residents. Right, keep, right, absolutely. So I noticed that, it seemed like we have a homeless problem here, over there at the car wash. There's someone that's living in that car wash, you know about it? So that's, I see that as a problem, it's just a beginning of something. We need to stem that. We need to have a place for homeless people. We don't wanna put them in jail, or just kick them around, so let us consider that. Food, um, the restaurants that are coming into the community, I'm a little concerned about that. Because I'm concerned about our health outcomes in the community here. All these fast food places are not good for our community. We're suffering with diabetes, cancer, obesity, and all these other diseases based on our eating habits. So please, don't let other fast food places come in, cause we can bring more in here than some fried chicken and some barbecue ribs. You understand, we are more than that. We're more than that. I'm not putting these people down who have these restaurants, but I'm just talking about in our little community here. We need to be broader, we need to take care of our people here. Because, uh, the outcomes for us are not very good at all. The street repair. The streets need to be repaired all over University Park. And every year, they're getting worse, and I wanna know, why aren't they being repaired? This is something that the village manager is supposed to be managing. I want it managed, you know? So let's get it, be about that now, the police department. I would like to see more policemen's out here. I don't know what the problem is why we can't get our policemen's up to par, our department up to par. You know, and the same with the fire department, I see these poor men running here and one running there, just don't look like there are enough people on the trucks. So I would like to, for us to do some real improvement here. So I think I've talked, okay, if you're talking about bringing water into this community, you know you're gonna have to have a feasibility study done. And that's very pertinent. Don't tell people in this community, we gonna get you some water. You gotta speak to us honestly, don't cover your behind. Step up and do something about it, you know? Okay. I think I've said all that I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to, um, to speak on that, Ms. Boyd. That TAP program does run to July twenty-first. I am in touch with them. Pretty direct, myself and the mayor, and the board of trustee, Kim Sanders, she's the liaison to us. And me and her are constantly on the phone with them, checking the progress, seeing what else we can do. Because it looks like there will be a new lawsuit. So we're getting our information together, we're asking people to save those letters. If you received a letter from TAP, and they said that your water was compliant, we need those letters. We need to know who was compliant and who wasn't. The majority so far is compliant. So Aqua and this situation hasn't gone away. I've been this voice, I'm gonna stay this voice for that situation. I have not let it go. I still get residents calling, their bill is too high. The water is not good, it smells like eggs, it's brown, and you know, they're flushing now. So it's a lot going on with it, but I am one person, and Ms. Kim and me work together. And she's not here tonight, but I wanna give her a round of applause, cause this woman works around the clock. I can't give her enough praise. She's constantly working for us, for the community, and for the trustees and the mayor. I've never seen anyone that diligent before that we have had to do the things that she does. So her heart is in this community, she works hard. I wanna also extend condolences to Dee Jones, to Ms. Callaway, to, um, um, Ms. Griff, Ms. Greer. And also, in case you all didn't know, Curtis McMullins and his wife Christine, they lost their mother. Ruth Adams, who was a person in this community for over forty years, was my neighbor. And I just attended her service a few days ago. So everybody be prayerful, be watchful, be kind, be nice. We need to always keep each other in prayer, and work together to build a better community. And that's all I have to say.